Okay, welcome to the April 17, 2014 zoning board of appeals meeting. Mr. Duggan is unable to be here tonight, so if any of the applicants are desirous of his participation, we'd have to ask you to continue till next month.
We're fine.
Okay, we'll just move it along then. And Mr. Duggan? So, oh yeah, and if anybody's here has noticed that there was going to be some discussion on plans for the Stockbridge Road 40B project, that's not being heard tonight, so we don't want to keep anybody who's maybe waiting for that, it will not appear. So, Nicole?
First application is continued from March 20, 2014. Susan Whitney, trustee of 179 Edward Foster Road Realty Trust, and Ryan Whitney of Sevenstone Avenue, request a special permit and/or any other relief that the board appeals may grant pursuant to Section 610.2B, 5950.2B, and 950.3 of the city's zoning bylaws, made a lot with more than 50 feet of frontage, and two times required upland square footage at 179 Edward Foster.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jeff DeLeese, I'm here with our client, Brian Whitney's mom. Brian's unavailable right now, so Susan's here. And then we also have Paul Maravito. I'll let Paul talk in a minute as to what was recently submitted to the file. I don't want to be reiterative. This board spent a good hour at the last hearing. Should you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. I understand the board received the letter earlier today from the primary abutters who raised this issue, who got that issue, that they now support the project and they withdrew their objection. In addition, I just wanted to note that I'm pretty certain that we also, in addition to the submittal from Brad Holmes, I think Paul has run some calculations and he's prepared to indicate that we have the wetland, the upland square footage that is necessary here. So, Paul?
Very good. And by agreement, we limited our conversation from last meeting, correct?
Yeah.
To this issue?
Yeah.
So, we're moving to that. Paul?
The plan, the end of the last meeting, here's the change. Parcel 6 shows 7,000, 700 something square feet, and the added to the upwind for lot A is a total of 36,089 square feet, which would amount to 6, which meets the requirement of the zoning bylaws, 610.2B, that you have at least 20,000 square feet of contiguous upwind. The report prepared by Brad Holmes in March 24th is a testament to his field review, is a certified by this, and he performed the necessary testing on the site in March as well as last fall, and returning that parcel 6, but we're here to speak about the season, is in fact all upland area. And there's also photographs that were attached to that, that also show the areas being all worn, which we talked about the last meeting.
Very good. All right, do any of the board members have any questions related to that issue? Brian?
No.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions regarding the wetlands issue only? That's what we're limiting our conversation to tonight, so. Okay. Already, if there is nothing further, do we have a motion from the board?
We're looking at you.
Well, we're all looking at you, because you picked it out.
Just wanted to check your, everyone else's verbiage. Let's see, we need to, we're creating the 50 foot, we're just confirming the 50 foot frontage lot.
Correct.
Move to grant pursuant to 610.2B, 5950.2B, and 950.3, the 50 foot frontage lot as shown on the plan. I don't have a copy of the plan in front of me.
I have it dated December 10, 2013.
Dated December 10, 2013, and it's already been confirmed by planning board, right?
Yes.
And as, being the same plan reviewed and confirmed by planning board.
Second?
Second, what was the last part that you said?
Being the same plan reviewed and confirmed by planning board.
If I remember, I think we need to say that there's a deed restriction and that the property shall not be further subdivided after the special permit is granted.
I think the plan stipulates that in a note already.
Note number 10 states that?
Yes.
Note number 10, as required by the bylaw, indicates that it should not be further divided.
Yep. Second to motion, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, is there something?
You gonna write that?
Yeah, I'll write that. You'll get that.
You'll get that one too, in a couple days.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
They were looking at me to make the, you know, motion so they could make me write it, so.
Write it, right?
That's one off my plate.
We can send a few more your way. Second application?
Second application, David Rafferty of 08 Whitey Avenue, was dead and worked by NBL, 48th Century, Special Order 58, and any more, that would be the area of the property.
Did you bring up the new plan?
Yes, yes, I did.
And let me tell the board members what I refer to. When I reviewed the plan, I noticed that the left side setback is marked at two locations, the right at only one location, so I just called them and asked them to note the second location, so we knew exactly. No, no question, so, okay. Homeland's what's this? We need to have this?
He had that listed.
I'm sorry? No, no, that was, that's separate, that, not the form.
That's not for us.
That's correct.
Anytime I see something with the division of Homeland Security, I start to sweat.
That's the elevation to dedicate.
Okay. So, Nicole, we have a new plan, and as I said, oh, you got one for her too? Here. This is, is this the addition? It's just put the second sideline setback.
The 13.02?
It's the same. This was the, I had them add this.
Oh, the?
They had it 8.15 and 8.15, I just thought for a.
Okay.
Keep it clean, okay. Good afternoon, good evening.
Hi.
You want to explain what you'd like to do here?
Yes.
Oh, and identify yourself for the record, too.
I'm Dick Rockwood. I've done the architectural work for David Rafferty. This is the owner, David, he has a project, and just maybe for convenience, I.
I'm sorry, could we stop? Great, could you shut the door, maybe?
It's a little easier on the eyes.
Okay.
Basically.
Super, thank you.
I have to do it for me, I figure I'll share it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What we have is, we're on River Street, on the ocean side of the street, and we have a one-story house that's there now. David's family has been down in the area, and the different family members live all within a couple houses around us, and the orange shaded area is the existing dwelling that's 860 square feet. We want to tear that down and put a new house on pilings, and it's already been approved at conservation. We went two weeks ago. And then our new proposed footprint, we're doing more than a 20% increase, so we are conforming on the right side, the left side, and the rear, but we would like to maintain the non-conforming, it's 26 feet presently in the front, we wanted to maintain that instead of bringing it back to the 30.
Well, to be precise, it's 26.08.
Correct.
Okay.
Question, did you, did you do a calculation of the abutting properties within 200 feet between ways?
No, we did not, because that is our existing size.
Right.
Which we just maintained in our existing non-conforming. Only done that when I wanted to extend out to match the neighbors.
I'm just curious what the neighborhood is. I mean, it may be you're conforming in as much as you are conforming with the neighbors.
I know that regulation's out there, we use it quite a bit, I didn't check it in the situation, because we weren't going down that road. I actually think they were, I think, I was just more forward, the ones on the left and the right.
I can't say for sure, but it kind of seems to line up pretty much.
I'm kind of going on my familiarity with the neighborhood, and I'm guessing that they're all more or less the same, and if not, perhaps even closer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you may be conform, you may actually be conforming. This, that may not be a non-conforming issue. You still have lots.
I think you can use the average, but I don't know that that makes me conforming. That's kind of a question. If I use the average, I know I'm allowed to come out, let's say if my house, if my house was back further and I wanted to come out the average of the neighbors, but if I am the average of the neighbors, does that actually make me a conforming house, just for my own future record?
I would say yes.
I would say no.
But the bylaw, the bylaw says you have a certain setback.
Right.
Or the average of the neighbors, which is makes, would be conforming to the bylaw.
Well, when it comes to force again, I'll be prepared.
No, I'm just saying, if you had a, if you had a lot, and it was, and the lot was conforming in size, your sideline setbacks, your rear line setback would be as stipulated in the bylaw, but your front line setback varies depending on what the neighborhood is. So, it is, if it's undeveloped, or if the average is greater than the 30.
Does that make it conforming, or is that just?
I'm not a lawyer, but I wouldn't, it wouldn't be something we'd have to worry about, because you'd be able to comply, you'd be complying with the bylaw.
Right.
And definition of is, is has never, never been my favorite thing to talk about, so. Anyway, presuming that you are not conforming with the bylaw, you're still, your front yard setback is a less, as proposed, is less non-conforming than the previous. It was 26.8, and now it's going to be 26.2, 26.08, now it's going to be 26.2.
Well, I understood that the one corner would be 26.2 at that point, or is that the closest?
I see it as 26.08.
No, that's what I thought.
On both cases.
Yeah.
I'm just, obviously, I'll probably pull it back three extra inches or something, just, you know, whatever this layer tells me.
Okay, so the 26.2 on the left side of the plan on the front, is that proposed, or is that just?
26.2 is the proposed addition at that corner.
So, I'm actually further back than the existing houses, is 26.0.
Because you're notching out that uncovered deck.
Oh, I see that notching. I didn't see it as all covered in, I thought it was included.
It is actually covered.
Okay. You're good one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Right.
You certainly know, you certainly know closer, and it appears that, at least on one side, you're a little bit farther. Okay. Are you trying to square it up on the, I mean, you've got the set, sides.
I have it in a sense, squared it up to the lot, as best we can, and then we have the rear deck, and I've worked with it in my existing, septic system's already existing, as we did a couple years ago.
Okay.
So, I've been to conservation, I'm all approved, I'm under my 40-foot height, even if I, if I lived in floodplain now, that would make my first floor about five feet high.
And your proposed square footage is 1380, correct?
Yes, now for the living space plus the, up 280 square feet on the deck.
Okay. Great.
And there's, this would represent the front elevation of the house, 36, 36 and a half feet, with the highest elevation if I come up to 15 to meet the proposed floodplain maps.
And anybody who interested in seeing that, see it? Anything else you'd like to tell us? I think you got it covered.
I think I've covered the issues that may be of concern.
Okay. We did get, we did get a letter in support of the application. Looks like there might be a family relationship there, sure, Michelle Rafferty, or just consequence?
Sister.
Okay. Boy, that's good, though, because you have sisters and brothers.
Indeed.
So, it must be, it must be okay. Any question from any board member?
Is that the elevation, is that the only copy?
Oh, no, we have it in the file.
This one, right?
I think you have the whole house.
Yeah.
It was sent in, but you're welcome to have that.
Oh, okay, you just blew up the section?
I just blew it up.
Ah, because that was a small print.
Yeah.
Got it.
And actually, the, if I actually raced to the floodplain, I'm like 18 inches higher than what was on that. Right, I'm covered by today's standards, so I don't have to, who knows what will happen with the proposed elevation, but, just a copy. You're welcome to ask, you can give the file.
Yeah, maybe here. Let's take a peek.
Are you backwards?
Yeah, we're copied backwards. It was, and then I go wrong. Yeah, I mean, here's the scenario, what happens to the piling, if I go by today's standards, I have to be at, I have to be a 12 feet of clearance on the eighth, and so if the, with the new floodplain map, I'd have to be up at 15, so, and that still gets me into my, you know, I'm only 36 feet.
I'm not as close. But that's. and exceptions, in all districts, no building need be setback on its lot further than the line of a street or way, than the average distance from such line of the buildings on the same side thereof, between two intersecting streets and ways within 200 feet of the lot in question. I mean, that's stipulated in the bylaw, that's, that's in compliance, if you were able to show us that that would, that in fact would be the average.
Correct.
So, I mean, I don't, as I said, I'm not challenging the concern, because you're basically maintaining your current setback or reducing the non-conformity, but.
Does that enter in each lot that's within 200 feet, or the actual structure within 200? Where's the 200 feet?
It's on the same side.
The edge of my lot?
It's 200 feet of the lots, so the, so you, if you have to take any, any lot that was in 200.
If I had a lot, if I were to, one way, I'd take that house?
Between intersecting ways.
Right.
So, you have to, you know, if you go over a way, you can't do it.
I've done it multiple times.
But, and again, Neil would be the best arbiter on that, but if you're, if you have a lot that is one, is one foot into that 200, and the vast majority of the lots outside it, I would say, no, you probably don't include that. It's those that are, those lots that are included in that 200 feet, but then you average it, and a non-developed lot is 30, you know.
Well, no matter what, a non-developed lot is 30, or the average?
No, if the lot is not developed in that averaging, you calculate it as 30, so, in working the average.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. There's nothing on that.
Again, I'm not, I'm not concerned on this application. I think the, the use hasn't changed, it's, it's increased in the size of the dwelling, but you're going from a one, a one-level dwelling to a multi-story dwelling, consistent with the neighborhood, use hasn't changed, it's consistent with the neighborhood, I don't have a problem with it.
And actually, if we look under Gale, then we have to identify the respect, respects in which it does not conform, and it does not conform by the front yard setback. We have to ask if we're going to intensify it, or result in new ones, but I think when you're going up, under the, under, what is it, Bjorkland versus Norwell, I think we have to say that it does intensify it, but.
Not significantly.
But it's not, yes, but it's not, I would say, no substantial.
You think going up intensifies the setback?
Well, by going up, yeah, I think that's what Bjorkland versus, versus Town and Norwell says. But, then you get to this question, is it a, was it a substantial detriment, which you kind of went through those factors, you go through those factors.
And it's not conforming because of lot size, too.
And lot size.
But there's nothing you can go about the lot size.
No.
And it's possible it's actually conforming in front yard setback.
Well, since we don't have to worry about that.
I bring it up because in future, in future, I'd rather know if it conforms to under the bylaw or not, so.
So, so I would, I would say, I think we have to make a finding of no substantial detriment.
You ready?
Ready.
Move to find that the property at 135 River Street is non-conforming with both, with respect to both the front and rear setback, and lot size.
Not rear.
Not rear.
Not rear, just front.
Not rear, just the front, okay, yeah, I thought it was rear, too. Yes, the front setback and lot size, and that the proposed alteration or addition to the structure would intensify the existing non-conformities, and also to find that the proposed alterations are not a substantial detriment, and therefore to grant the special permit requested under Chapter 48, Section 6.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, is there any discussion by anybody in the audience? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nicole, let's figure out before we go anywhere, who's up for writing?
Ed is one on both.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's got to be me, I haven't done one in a while.
Only one, Ed did his Sarah, and the last one, so we'll take Frank's, Frank's up.
Okay.
And then Frank, and then Anthony would be up next, but, okay.
He's not here, unfortunately.
But Anthony's not here, so it would be you, Sarah, I guess.
Okay.
And then after Sarah, it's me again, or John?
I don't know. Do you want to high five?
I think I jumped in one time.
All right. Next up.
This stuff is, third application is Ashley Vickers, trustee of the State of Henry G. Vickers Jr., and M&amp;B C's Vickers, administrator, executive of the estate, requests special permit in accordance with Section 610.2B, 50 foot frontage lot, 47.
Hello?
Good evening. For the record, Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering, representing the State of Henry Vickers. We're here in accordance with Section 610.2B to allow a 50-foot frontage lot to be created at this property. The property's located at 47 First Parish Road, it's shown on the plan that I presented in front of you. This is in the R3 zoning district, which requires 10,000 square feet of land area. For a 50-foot frontage lot, your bylaw specifies that you need 20,000 square feet of land area. The subdivision as shown creates Lot 2, which has the minimum of 50 feet of frontage, it actually has 15.31 feet of frontage, and it has 25,359 square feet, which is two times the minimum area. All of the area is upland area. We request a special permit to build a single-family dwelling on Lot 2. This plan has been endorsed by the planning board.
Can I do that, is that, is that marked on here?
Plan that you have? No, what they do is they sign in here on the bylaw plan that goes to registry.
Oh, okay.
This was submitted to you prior to them endorsing that, but it's the same plan.
Okay. And is the, is this, is some notation on the, with respect to the uplands of the, of the plan?
It says there's no known wetlands or resource areas within 100 feet of the locus.
Okay.
That's note five.
Note five, okay. That's all I was looking for.
Yep.
And I guess you pulled, at one point, it was the, I don't know what lot line, the lot, the lot line that was behind the garage, you pulled that back a little bit?
Correct.
Suggestion of Mr. Duggan?
Yeah, we thought the garage was a single story and didn't have to comply with the rear yard, we thought it was exempt, but it is a two-story structure, so we made it comply with the rear yard setback.
What is the, what is the structure immediately to the right of the shed, as you're looking at the map in your direction?
I see, the shed here?
Right, yeah, there's the shed, and then if you go over to the next door lot, the, I know it's not on your map, but I saw it, you know, I looked at it, there's a bunch of houses, looks like four different structures on that.
Yeah, there's, I don't know.
Oh, you don't know it's a house?
It's all a lot locus. We located the fence line, which is essentially the property line, you'll see that here.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't locate anything off site.
Okay, I just wondered if you knew, and your client's not here?
No. Those are accessed via Dunphy's Lane, which is just off Locust to the right.
Yeah, there's a bunch, there's like.
I think there's four houses.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
There's four houses on Dunphy's Lane, yeah.
Okay. All right, so Frank, you were looking at the fifty-foot lot bylaw, how are we looking there?
I was.
You were, five minutes ago.
I think he went to the lot.
What number is it again?
Page eighty-six.
Eighty-six, that's really precise.
Six ten point two B.
Six ten, that's right.
Greg, this will need a notation on the plan about, should not be further divided. I think it's.
Oh, now I know what you mean. Yeah, I was looking at it two hours ago.
It's been a long night. Right. We'll put that in the decision if it's favorable to your client, and that'll have to be done. Did you already record the plan?
No, the plan has not been recorded.
Okay, so that's good, so it can be added to that.
It's on page eighty-seven. Six ten point two B three. Any lot that receives a special permit under section may not be further subdivided, and a special permit shall include a condition to that effect. A deed restriction shall be shown on the plan and thereafter recorded shall provide that any such lot or lots are subject to a special permit recorded herein, and said lots shall not be further subdivided. Mr. Arkan used to argue that that should say further divided, but that was, that did get changed. That was, that went on every time we did one of these things.
We can do that in his memory.
Divided versus subdivided. It was, he had a very specific reason for it.
Okay. All right. So, is there anybody here that wouldn't have any, yes, ma'am?
I am one of those houses up back to the right.
Oh, okay.
And I do have some serious concerns. I'm Vicki Gibbs. Forty-three, Rear First Parish Road. Actually, this letter that you guys sent was the very first I heard that they were trying to separate the lot. They didn't ever come to me or any of us that I know of. But we have a great amount of problems with drainage back on my house and on that lot. Mr. Crowley, the person who had been in the house previously, had been greatly concerned when they were building the school, because he was so worried about the drainage back there and the mush that it can become. I'm concerned that if a building goes there, then it's going to cause me more drainage issues. I'm about twenty feet from the fence and about twenty feet from that shed, so.
So, yours is the house I probably saw?
Yes, yes. Definitely, yes. I'm the only one that actually abuts this proposed lot.
Okay.
So, I'm very concerned about the drainage. It's wet and mushy. It's wet and mushy up toward my house, and I'm guessing it's wet and mushy up there. I'm not, I'm not understanding how they got, as far as they got, or, do they check the water levels? They tell me, or they had told me previously, when they were building the school, because there were so many concerns, that they think there's an underground spring up in the field that abuts us both. So, I do have a lot of concerns. Not only that, it will make my backyard virtually inside somebody else's yard. I mean, it's like it's in a little silo. My house is directly here, there's a fence about twenty feet away, there's a school behind, there's a church parking lot here, and they're proposing to clunk this house smack dab in my backyard, and then they're trying to sell the house in front, so the front yard of that house will be directly in the backyard of the house they're selling. I just have.
I know, well, let me speak to the drainage.
I'm more worried about the drainage than anything else, and how building another structure on that land can affect my land.
Now, John might be able to speak on that, because Situate has, don't we have, like, drainage bylaws or something like that, that when you build, you have to be worried about, so?
Yes, I'd actually agree, maybe address some of those, because I'm sure they're going to come up. Is it on town, is a lot on town, sort of?
The lot does have access to town sewer, and this is the first, you would have heard of this project, this is the first of the meetings that we will have. This will be required to go through the stormwater bylaw with the town, it will require a filing with the planning board. Anytime you're rebuilding on an undeveloped piece of land or adding more than a thousand square feet of impervious, you have to do a stormwater bylaw filing. As part of that filing, we'll have to document that we are not increasing the rates or the volumes of water from this site onto an abutters property. Having not started that portion of the project, because we don't know who the builder or who the developer is going to be of this property, we don't know how we're going to do that at this point, but I would imagine it's going to be through the use of some pervious materials, probably some dry wells for roof runoff, grading, swales, you know, all of these measures will be utilized by someone as the property is developed.
Right now, you haven't got a location for the property or the size of the.
The house itself.
The house, you just have a, there is a setback, but again, with the stormwater issues, it's not like it was, it's been four or five years now that that's been in place.
Yes.
So, again, that diversion, swales, and whatnot is something newer to the bylaws on conservation.
And where does that get presented? Does that planning board, who asked it, who do you go before, or conservation?
Plant, planning board, if there are no wetland issues on the site, which there are not here, if there are wetland issues on the site, it gets administered through conservation.
And also notification when it does go in front of planning board, are the neighbors notified?
I believe they are.
In writing, with a mailing and in writing?
I believe they are notified of that filing with the planning board.
So, you will, at some point, this will be.
Yes.
Going to the planning board for that purpose?
Correct.
So, do you understand what we're saying?
I do understand what you're saying.
Okay, yeah, so this is step one, but they have a lot of hurdles yet to go over, and if we grant this, then at some point, they've just got to decide where they're going to build it, what it's going to look like, and go through that whole stormwater bylaw process, which is pretty onerous.
Yeah, they take into consideration the driveway, what it's made of, where the drainage is, the roof square foot area, where that drains to, how it rains, what kind of pitch towards your property, so you're not going to get any runoff that way, or it's going to be captured somehow, so it doesn't continue.
It might actually make a big improvement on your property, which you can only hope.
There's a house smack dab in my backyard, is what I'm looking forward to.
But also, there's a hill, there's a steep hill between this property and Jenkins School, if you will, so that.
Yeah, Jenkins put a hill there, yeah. They built a scale of the school up above.
So, you love your work kind of way.
Generally, generally, the topography here runs from the south, which is the bottom of the plant here, to the north to First Parish Road. It's not running across the lot as much as it's running down toward First Parish Road here.
Can I ask a question, Sarah?
Sure.
Having read this earlier today.
Good, two hours ago.
So, section two ten point two B four.
Okay, what page were you on there?
So, that's page eighty-eight.
Oh, you just said two ten.
Section two ten.
Oh, section.
So, it's the section after, the one we were talking about earlier. Provides that the Board of Appeals in granting a special permit for a fifty-foot frontage lot may impose such conditions, safeguards, and limitations as it may deem reasonably appropriate to protect the neighborhood or otherwise serve the purposes of the bylaw, such as, but not limited to, the requirement of front side or rear yards greater than the minimum required by the bylaw. And so, I guess my question is, is how can we even engage in that process if we don't know where the house is going to be?
Well, we can just, well, I'll tell you how we can get, we can say, you can't be, you know, instead of the eight foot, we can increase it to twenty foot, it seems to me, to create a little bit bigger.
Buffer.
Buffer there.
We could treat that side yard as a, essentially maybe a rear setback.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because it's an odd configuration, you know, and it really is.
It might be reasonable.
The rear to this lady's house.
Is your, when you're pulling, do you. Twenty feet off the lot, you said?
Her house is twenty feet off?
Yeah. On Dunphy's Lane, is your rear yard facing this?
Shed, right?
Facing the shed?
Yes, the shed is about twenty feet from my kitchen window.
Okay, so your front yard, if you will, will face Saint Mary's, towards the harbor, that way, Hannah?
Yeah, we, Rear First Parish Road is not that far, by the way. The road comes up and we all face into the road.
Gotcha, okay.
But it makes my.
Well, since you're rear, this would be, to Frank's point, considered a rear maybe as opposed to a side yard.
How far is your house from the lot line, do you know?
About, around about twenty feet. I'm around forty feet from that shed.
Okay, okay, I thought you said twenty feet from the shed, okay.
No, 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 the lot line, if the shed is about twenty feet from the lot line.
All right, so you've got a pretty good buffer, then. I mean, relatively, relatively speaking, there's never enough.
Twenty, I have about twenty feet, so, I mean.
Well, twenty feet, no, you only have forty feet, don't you?
I have twenty feet to the lot line.
Right, and then another twenty feet to the shed line.
To the, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know where it is from, from the lot line to the shed.
The side setback, which is, right.
Right, 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 but in the shed, the shed isn't really, it's not, you know, precise where it's located.
The shed is likely to be where the house is going to be, right?
Yes.
Now, that house would be on top of me, if there's a house there where that shed is.
Well, and that's why I asked the question, but, you know, the rear setback is, can be eight feet.
No, rear setback is twenty, side setback is.
Side setback, I'm sorry, side setback could be eight feet, which that could be a side, considered a side, right?
That's.
So, you theoretically, you could be eight feet from the line, and a house on the other side could be eight feet, so there's only sixteen feet between the two houses.
Are you telling me this, or him?
No, I'm telling you, under the bylaws, that, depending on how.
I can't say that I've seen a whole lot of houses with that kind of density in Situate, but.
Oh, yes. You need to get out more, we're going to have to take you on a tour.
What you need to understand is what we're looking at here is, the, we're in a ten thousand square foot zone. This is, this property, the combined property is forty-six thousand square feet. In theory, theory, if they had frontage, you could put three houses on this parcel. You can get frontage off a common driveway. Now, I don't know if, and there's only two hundred and ninety-seven feet on one side. I'm not, I don't know how one might configure it, but it's, I'm just saying, it's possible one might configure a three hundred foot frontage on a common driveway coming up through here and end up getting three houses. The fifty-foot frontage bylaw is intended for specifically what they're doing here, and that is a large parcel where they're accessing, it's always been traditionally backland, because homes were generally built on streets in the earlier days, where in order to access the backland without tearing down the existing house, without putting in a development or a subdivision or whatever, we're able to access some of that land. It may seem unusual here, because we're in a ten thousand square foot zone. In a half acre lot zone, we're talking about going to a full acre. In the West End, where it's acre zoning, you're going to a two acre. You know, we're decreasing the density of the development in order to, to receive the privilege of a fifty-foot frontage option. So, this is intended to be a good thing, I know it may not sound like it, but, but the, but this is a large parcel, and having two houses on it is actually a very low density. It's half the density that this, that this zone allows. It may seem dense to you, but it's actually half the allowed density in the zone.
Regardless, I'm still concerned about the drainage, and the house, frankly, is in my backyard, and it does concern me.
Oh, I understand, but the drainage issue is one that, we've already talked about briefly, but you can't, you can't develop property and create a situation where water is being transferred from the, that is currently on the lot, is going to be transferred to someone else's lot. Any development on the property will.
So, quality of life of any of the neighbors is regardless? It doesn't count at all? I mean, my quality of life will change drastically if there's a house in my backyard.
Your rights as a property owner are exactly the same as your neighbor's rights as a property owner. If you wanted to do something on your property that was within the bylaws of the town, we'd have to allow you to do it. Your neighbor, who owns property, is asking to do something that's within the bylaws of the town, and we have to consider their rights as property owners, too.
Well, I thought we were here because it wasn't within the bylaws of the town.
It's exactly within the bylaws of the town. What they're asking to do here, the bylaws stipulate, is allowed to be done. They just have to allow, they have to show us that there is not going to be any, anything unusual in doing so. For example, you might have a fifty-foot frontage lot, which crosses wetlands, or needs to have relief, additional relief in order to achieve it, but, but the bylaw was created specifically for this type of a lot. It's been used in other ways, it's been used in creative ways, but this is as uncreative. I mean, I'm sorry, Greg, it's not, you know, I mean, this is, this is.
Straightforward.
Straightforward. We've got, we've got a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on a way, we've got an existing property.
So, what you're saying essentially, before you go on, is that I have very little recourse to this, at this point?
Other than, other than making a financial arrangement with the neighbor to buy, to purchase part of their land. No, your objection is, it's important for us to realize, I'm trying to actually find an aerial photograph of your home and position it, so I can, I can find some additional evidence to be able to evaluate what you're telling us. I'm not ignoring it, but I'm also trying to help you understand that this isn't something that they're asking to do that's unusual, and it's, it's actually an application of the bylaw that's intended to benefit you as a neighbor, so that this parcel isn't developed in a more dense way. It's, you know, you, they, there's another, you could create a two-family on this lot, you know, because it's got double lot size. There's lots of things you can do with land in town by right and by bylaw, and the applicant, which Mr. Morse represents, is simply asking to do it. That's why the, the planning boards endorse this plan, because it does everything that the bylaw says it has to do. So, we're taking evidence, and I'm trying to find a little bit more evidence, too, so, I'm not diminishing where you are, but, I'm sorry.
That's okay, perfect. Are you pulling it up?
I'm working on it.
Yeah, doing the same.
Don't come again without your little.
Laptop.
Laptop. Your little iPad. Usually has his iPad, and you can, like, he pulls it up in about thirty seconds.
I know, it's charging the battery, I didn't bring it today.
I was looking for forty-three.
We should ask town, town meeting for little funds to buy one. We're like, we got books.
Well, we used to have, they did put the monitor up there, and we would have been able to project it.
Although, the projector, if it was a TV, it was.
You could actually have a flat screen and have the iPhone.
Well, it used to be one of the areas now.
All right, I got it, all right, I got it. You don't have any pictures, Greg, of the lot, do you?
Aerial view, no, I don't. The back there, Lot Two, is primarily cleared, it's all lawn area for the most part.
I mean, I looked it on Google Earth.
There's a fence essentially that runs the perimeter, runs down that entire side between Lot Two and the other.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of trees there.
That might be an old satellite pigeon.
There is quite a few trees.
There is a lot of trees?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's helpful, you know, so. My suspicion, and maybe we can think about something like that, is, I mean, I, if it was closer, I would, might think a little bit different, but I would not be inclined to wanna limit where they could build on this lot, you know?
Which is her house?
Because it's just, you know, you never know what you're working with, and they should be able to site it where it works, for lots of reasons. But where you got a lot of trees, I don't know that we can condition it exactly, but I.
Do you think your client would have a problem with changing the side setbacks from eight feet?
Oh, I was, I'm kind of thinking of two different options here. One would be changing the side setback from eight feet to, say, double the distance, say sixteen feet, or to provide some vegetative screening along that side lot line.
Well, that's what I was thinking of, without having to, because you do have, if you've got, if the shed is roughly forty feet from the lot line, and her rear lot line is twenty feet, that's sixty feet, that's pretty substantial.
Yeah.
But if, if there would be.
And you might need that side for swale in purpose, or some room anywhere to work with if you gotta.
This is the field she was talking about.
I'm thinking if you are increasing the side yard setback, that would be to the structure. Clearly, you'd be allowed to keep.
Right.
But if you hit a vegetative screen along that side.
I mean, it sounds, looks like they, I mean, it's already there, it just wouldn't cut as much down.
No, there are higher trees, it wouldn't screen it, and I can see all the way across the field.
Yeah.
I think whether the house is eight feet off of the side yard setback, or twenty feet off the side yard setback, it's still gonna be a visual obstruction.
Oh, sure, but. A little more spaces.
Absolutely.
Goes a long way.
Yeah, that's some sun back there.
So.
Your house sits a little kitty corner on the lot?
Yes, it is, yeah. So, there's a portion of the house that's closer than that twenty feet, it's about, what am I?
I'm just, I'm.
Ten fifteen or so, because it's in a odd, yes, in the lot.
All right, so Greg, what do you, what would, what do you think you could propose?
Either, either a sixteen-foot side yard setback, or providing a vegetative screen, either rhododendrons or arborvitae's along that side lot line of lot two.
Either or?
I would say either or.
My thought, and again, without actually being on site, you're going to end up with a driveway coming up the fifty-foot way, the long driveway. There's gonna be so much driveway already, it's not going to suggest to a developer or builder that you're going to, homeowner, to increase the driveway so that the house sits way over next to your lot anyway. It's going to be to their advantage to kind of position it.
Shorten the driveway.
Shorten the driveway and create more, the backyard is really going to be the area between your home and whatever was developed here, I would expect. I mean, privacy for lots of reasons, unless there's a, you know, a physical characteristic of geography that says you can't do that, big rock. So, I, it would seem to me that the sideline, increasing the sideline setback on that side doesn't accomplish as much as.
Screening.
A proposed screening. I think that, that would be a way to, you know, help to maximize your privacy on the lot, on your lot, and it would give them some privacy as well. In either case, the, the school is, you know, the school playground and stuff is going to be pretty prevalent. That's, that's obviously the biggest. That is probably the biggest impact.
Actually, abutting the hill.
Yeah.
They, the eye above the field, they above the hill, and right above, at the top, is where the school is, and the basketball court is actually right there.
Basketball courts and the four square courts. I live two blocks over, so I'm familiar with the area, and I was on the school committee when we built it.
The hill right behind it, that's like straight up.
Yeah.
With the turkey run, right down the back.
Well, just to come in, you know, you're proposing to shorten either the setbacks or provide some screening, so it might be, one of those two things might help with a solution. Is that something that you would?
As I said, I'm more concerned, in the overall, about the drainage. Yes, I absolutely am concerned about the privacy.
And again, the drainage issue is gonna be addressed at another.
It's huge, yeah.
It's gonna be addressed, and they look and do pretty well too. He'll have his work cut out for him to provide that. You know, with Frank's, when he brought up the section four, and having that room to make the adjustment or additional there, and it's being offered, we're just trying to get some leeway, which way the board might.
Well, I, I think I would be more towards requiring screening, because we don't know the conditions on the lot.
See the parking here.
And where they may have to place anything, or where they want to. It's a big lot, and they, you know, I, I'm not inclined to restrict them, where to put their, you know. No, no, I mean. Who knows where they're gonna put it, but.
The shed that shows here somewhere in here.
I mean, I think that there is, they meet the side yard setback, I think the best, I think the thing would be is to ask for some screening. That would be, what my preference would be, is screening as opposed to increase in the setback.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's, I suggested is, I think that the bylaw gives us flexibility to do almost anything, so screening probably, I'd be fine with screening rather than the required setback, because she's got at least twenty feet, so you're gonna have twenty-eight feet at least, right?
Before building, and the screening, which would probably.
With the screening, yeah.
What with the drainage as well, to a certain degree.
How do we, how do we, I guess, how do we specify what the screening is gonna be? It's easier to say, let's make it sixteen feet, than it is to say.
It sure is, but.
You need to have an arborvidae that's twenty feet high, or whatever.
Well, rhododendrons or arborvidae, whatever it's called, I think the, I don't know how I would use the word, but they're dense plants. It's not like planting oak trees, you know, so, lower to the ground, so I think if we do something similar to, you know, so they should be screened by rhododendrons, arborvitae's, or.
Comparable.
Comparable plant, plantings.
Of what dimension, though, don't you have to?
An eight-foot buffer to be planted with screening material.
Well, I think when we're, when we're specifying trees, we're typically topping height of the tree. Are you talking eight feet in height for the arborvitae? I'm just thinking that might be hard to get out of the nursery stock.
No, you might start off at four feet.
You might, you might have a smaller plant, it'll obviously grow with time, but buying eight-foot arborvitae's might be a bit much.
Certainly have eight-foot arborvitae's.
I'm not saying that they don't, but arborvitae's do grow with time, as do rhododendrons. If you start off with a four footer, it would certainly grow to an eight-foot height with time.
They're pretty fast growing, aren't they?
And if we're specifying that it's along the entire lot line, ninety-six feet in length on lot two, I think that's a substantial proposal.
Well, not being much of a.
But then, for years, I would still have the house in my backyard, until the arborvitae's grew, you know?
You're gonna have the house in your backyard.
Yeah, that's right. There's a lot we can do about that.
I'm not so, I'm not so sure we're looking at screening as an issue as much as a buffer, a buffer area. I mean, again, screening is.
Complete.
Is completely closing it off. It can be, that can be even more imposing, that can be, that's, that's, that's an aesthetic. I think a buffer zone, creating the eight-foot, the eight-foot setback as being a vegetated buffer zone as opposed to lawn, keeping the lawn from going right up to the yard. It creates, it moves the house away from your home a little bit, gives you the, your existing setback, which you say is approximately twenty feet or so to the lot line, plus another eight-foot of vegetated area as opposed to lawn, and that, you've walked the land, does that, does that seem like a unreasonable imposition, or?
I think Greg's saying, we got ninety feet, how, you know, we've gotta have some, because, you know, I mean, we've gotta do a little bit more specific, with more specificity there, because it's like, you know, they put three up, is that what was intended? Are we looking for them to put, like, twenty-five up, and now it costs them fifteen thousand dollars?
Well, I'm not proposing screening, I'm sorry, I'm proposing just a vegetated buffer.
Landscaped buffer.
Well, I think landscape could be grasslands.
Well, I think he.
Non-lawn.
Non-lawn, was talking about that.
Well, how do you define a vegetated buffer that can be complied with? I mean, that's the issue.
Oh, I think, I think all that is saying is that it be vegetative rather than lawn, and then it's really up to the homeowner as to what type to put in, and I guess, you know, as I think, I think this out a little bit more, I've got a huge pine trees between myself and my neighbors, and, you know, the problem is, is they're getting, well, they're getting too big, actually, she was just here earlier, they're getting too big, and I'm like, keep thinking about, well, okay, when I, if I have to take them down, what am I, you know, what am I gonna do, and how long is it gonna take? And then I say to myself, but, you know, of course, my neighbor could put up trees too, if they, if they, you know, don't like looking into my yard either, and so I'm not sure.
Well, I think the buffer he's referring to, again, might be a site buffer from standing in the backyard.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking use, more use, being vegetated instead of, I mean, I've got, I've got my neighbor's trees falling into my yard. I've got Japanese, the black, the black pines, which have grown, you know, out of control. They certainly meet the requirement of a sightline buffer, but they're, they're not going to, they're not surviving because they've gotten so big, so they're gonna have to come down, so there's gonna be a period of time when they're, when what they provided won't be there any longer, and I'll have to replace it. So, I mean, we can't, short of saying you're gonna put a twelve-foot fence up, that, you know, which we obviously wouldn't do. I think all we can do is simply say, we don't want, we think that the fifty-foot frontage lot should limit its use of the lot to not use that eight-foot area for lawn, or, and it should be a vegetated area. They can't put the house right next to it, they can't have a, and short of that, I don't think there's any, I think this is a, a pretty straightforward application. I don't see, I don't see constraining them by saying they have to maintain a, you know, eight-foot arborvitae's or something, because that, that can be as unattractive as having nothing there.
Well, I hate rhododendrons, no offense to anybody who likes rhododendrons, I would not be happy with that.
Someone buying, someone buying this lot's going to have enough issues with trying to create a, a place for quiet enjoyment with the school, but I'd like to leave them the flexibility to do that.
I do too, but I think we have to give them a little, and I think for the purpose of creating a buffer between them and the house directly to the east, look for an eight-foot vegetated area between the two houses. And, so the intent, you know, if they come, if they strip it and put one tree up, they're gonna have a problem, okay? So, I mean, I'm thinking, if, without getting into, literally, you have to, you know, and I've seen this with other town boards, you know, you have to tell them exactly what you're gonna put down, and where you're gonna put it.
What color it's gonna be.
What color it's gonna be, honest to God, yes, seriously, you know, you could say, well, you know, native blueberries, or something like that.
But I think that, is, that idea regarding the buffer will help to give them the flexibility, but still put some, something to it, and make it non-lawn.
Right. Okay.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Anything else from audience?
I could just say something about trees.
You could, you have to have to.
My name is John Deskey, fifty, in Golden Road, but Leland Cypress are very pretty trees, and they're very wide and tall and growing. They grow fast. It's just a suggestion, maybe versus the arborvitae's.
What was it called?
Leland Cypress. They're a very nice looking tree, but they grow wide and tall quickly.
We might, we might make some suggestions in the, in the, you know, so, but you know, you know what we're looking for, and so I think if we, if we.
It also just occurred to me, though, we have a problem, or we may have a problem. The stormwater mitigation may require a swale along that area, you know?
Right.
That, so, we can't say it's a non-disturbance zone, which I haven't suggested, but vegetated, it may be that they wanna swale it, and that may preclude putting trees or, you know, I don't think we wanna limit what the stormwater mitigation can be.
Well, I think what we'd have to do is phrase it in such a way that, you know, subject to any requirements imposed upon the builder or property owner, you know, by any stormwater review.
They could come back and ask us to modify it, right?
Yeah.
If that was a problem, I suppose.
And that would, that would easily be done.
Yeah.
You wanna try this one, Frank?
Curiously, Mr. Morse, the chain link fence that's delineated on the, on the site plan, is that owned by the subject property, or is it pre-existing and unknown? Is it part of the school?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Mr. Crowley said it was his.
That was, that was the prior owner to the Vickers estate?
Is it, three foot, four foot?
Goes all the way around.
Yeah, is it three or four foot high? Is it three or four foot high?
Yeah, somewhere around.
It is located on the, on this property.
It comes in and out of this property line.
Some of it is.
Yeah.
I'm trusting your accuracy.
Ready?
Sure.
Move to grant a special permit to create a fifty-foot frontage lot at forty-seven First Parish Road in accordance with bylaw section six-ten-point-two-B, as shown in the plan by Morse Engineering dated March sixth, two thousand fourteen, revised March twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, provided that the area of the lot on the easterly side abutting parcel fifty-dash-ten-dash-oh-six contained a eight-foot vegetated buffer zone running the length of the ninety-six-point-oh-three feet of that sideline, as shown for, as shown in the plan.
Second.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that mine, then?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I did most. I like that one, I, that doesn't look too hard. Looks pretty. All right. Our last application?
I think a minute, because that was very long.
We've never helped out anybody quite so much, I think. We've never helped out anybody quite so much, I think. That's what happens, you know, unfortunately, when you don't own the property behind your house, you're kind of stuck.
Well, I think it's, it's going to be a hard parcel to develop nicely because of the school. There's a lot of, with the school and the church and the, there, there are lots of limitations there. But it's, certainly, density is not the issue. That's a big lot for that area.
Yeah, no, it is. I know.
It's very well explained. It really is. I think that's the intent of the benefit of what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, ready?
Certainly.
Okay, our fourth and final application for this evening is Suzanne and James Mankiewicz of 6 Foam Road, 48 Section 6, special permit finding to increase growth for non-conforming single-family dwelling by more than 20% in the second floor, addition to apartment.
Denied. We're done?
You didn't really want to do this, did you?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mankiewicz, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us what you want to do.
I want to construct a second story on an existing single-family dwelling. First, I'm not going to be doing any site work or extending the foundation. I'm strictly going straight up with the main box of the house with no overhangs or cantilevers on the house. So it's basically just a small addition going straight up on the main box of the house.
Is this, this is a condominium considered?
It is.
I was kind of surprised on that. And you had a little taking issue way back when somewhere, huh?
It became condominiumized. I was on the board at the time.
Yeah.
The, what is unit two and unit one were on the same lot.
Yeah.
And, and there was no way to create two lots without creating the non-conformities. So that the, they went this approach, so that they're independently held properties. But it, it all had to do with drawing that lot line. Explosive use line.
I was referring to 1949, when the town constituent took some of the property.
That was, that, that helped to lead to why we got to this.
Right, right, right.
What it can be for us.
For those that are watching, the, the huge compensation of none. I don't think that would happen today. Did you see that?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, they took, they took the land for the street.
I said, thank you.
And, well, I hope they said thank you because they didn't pay the poor property owner a dime.
And I, I take you to one.
Yes.
Yeah. And as you said, you're just, you're keeping the same footprint. You're just going straight up.
Correct.
Okay. So we kind of, does anybody have any questions? Yeah, keeping the same footprint. Just going straight up.
It is in the floodplain, isn't it?
Yeah, that is the question. Is it in the floodplain?
Oh, in the floodplain. I thought you said footprint.
Yes.
No, floodplain.
Okay. So complicated here.
Well, this is the one with the, the empty lot behind it, the stone-filled lot. The undeveloped lot behind it. It's not subject to flooding.
Yes, we have that.
That was before us, about 24 months ago.
Yes.
Now we know what subject to flooding is, though. All right, so, so, so we need, do you need a floodplain special permit on this one? Is that what you're saying? Wait a minute, where's the, where's the map? I can't read it clear enough. Is this in the floodplain?
It is, yes.
Okay, so, do we need a floodplain special permit then? What did you say we needed?
I think, I think the portion of the taking, by the way, was over here.
Is that it?
It was, it was on the other side.
I think it was big enough that they should pay anything for it.
It was just around the corner.
All right, floodplain, all right. I guess floodplain special permit. 119? No. I don't have, I don't have this near the bookmark.
Still have the rolling shutters on the front of it?
Yeah.
A new one?
Oh, there we go. Let's see.
470?
Permit of use, a special permit. Well, I, do we need one? Because, oh, no, special permit substantial, which legally existed and may be issued in accordance, improvements. Oh, well, if you look at page 25, it says, special permit for substantial improvement of existing structures which legally existed on, which legally existed as of March 2, 1992, may be issued in accordance with the following. Must be consistent with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. I have no idea what that would be, but Neil will tell you. You have to, you have to comply with the Building Code pertaining to flood-resistant construction in consultation with the Building Commissioner. An improvement shall not affect natural drainage patterns of the water course. Well.
It's not going to change.
No, it's not going to do anything on that.
Yeah, but it's, this could be one of those things. But it's a Neil situation. If it's more than 25%, it may have to be raised, you know, if it's.
With the elevation.
If the elevation is different. But that's all, you must have had some conversations about that.
Right, that will be Neil's decision, I guess, if it, when I get a build permit.
Do you know what the elevation is at?
It's on the site plan, I believe. I think it's that.
This is kind of outside our jurisdiction. We just like to know what we're talking about. I mean, I think the only reason we're, we're here is the, it's a non-conforming rear line setback. Lot itself, I think, might comply.
As far as square footage.
No, it's a side yard setback.
Yeah, well, it's a.
It's a rear line setback off Jericho, and it's a sideline off of home.
Well, the sideline setback doesn't comply either. Because it looks to me like it's 6.48.
Correct.
So, so it's those non-compliance issues. And, and so we are increasing the size will be increasing the non-conformity.
Well, we're only increasing it because we're going up again.
Right, but we're, but we're basically under a, a Gale issue.
Yes.
So all we really have to do is, is find under Gale.
I think so, but I, I'm just, we don't have to find anything under, do we have to grant a split? My concern is that we need to grant a, do we also need to grant?
He hasn't asked for relief in that respect.
A floodplain special permit?
That's, that's to build new.
Well, no, because it says you can, you can, you have to have a special permit for substantial improvement of existing structures. But what is substantial improvement? And under the code, is it? There's a definition, I know.
Yeah, I think they use the.
25%.
The value, the value of the existing, more than 50 feet, the value of the existing. But Neil will.
I think we can, I think we can move forward on, on making our finding under Gale. And if.
We're just trying to prevent him from having to come back a second time.
But I think he could come back and ask for the finding of the permit as well, if it's deemed necessary without reposting. Actually, we haven't, we haven't posted a floodplain special permit here, so we really couldn't.
It hasn't been advertised.
It hasn't been advertised, so we really can't. We can't even discuss it outside of it.
Well, if Neil tells you, you have to come back, then you'll have to come back.
Okay, not a problem.
But I was hoping we didn't have to have you do that, but. Yeah, okay, so we, so we don't have to, so we do just have a Gale problem, not a problem. Didn't mean to say that we, the P-word. That always renders fear. No, it's Gale. So the Gale is, is that, the, the particular respects are the side yard setback. Right?
Correct.
Gale is a court case that gives us some guidance on how to handle this sort of a thing.
And do we have, what's the? Oh, it's got, oh, we got plenty's, frontage. Well, this is, this is, he's got that, the sides are conforming.
That's first garage, would you mind that?
Never mind. Sorry about that. I'm looking at it going, wow.
Did it move?
I just lost the whole thing. There it goes.
Yeah, that's.
There we go. We don't have them down here. So we got plenty of, okay. So the only thing is the rear setback, rear side yard setback, correct?
Yeah, we have the area.
Frontage is 100 feet, area is 10,000.
And the structure's.
Structure's 1940 according to the application. And Neil's, Neil signed the application, so.
So the, the intensification is just because you're going up.
And 20% more.
Right, more than 20%. Did we decide what is the, what's the square footage you have now?
I think it's roughly nine, it's 970, I believe, roughly.
And how much are you going to increase it?
Increase it, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's 16 feet wide by, I think, 30 feet is the addition, roughly.
480.
Wait. I can do that math.
You guys are good. So, 480, so that, and that's more than 20%, so.
Yeah.
All right. And then the question is, is it not, you want to do your little thing? Because you've got that down.
We'll do it again.
No, no, I was, it's got, it's got the powers thing down. The use reflects the nature and purpose of the use prevailing, not a difference in quality or character or degree of use. It's not different in kind in respect in the neighborhood. With that, I would, I would say that there is, it could be a finding of no substantial detriment. Is there a disagreement?
No disagreement.
No, the existing, according to the card, the existing net area is 924. Is that right?
Possibly. I'm sorry, I shouldn't know that.
No, that's right.
Yeah, and I think it said on the.
And you're just putting the second, you're doubling it, the second floor is going to be the same size as the first floor?
Right, but we're not double, actually, we're just doing the main box. There's two smaller additions on the house. We're not going above that.
So you're just doing the 40 by 15?
Correct.
I thought it was 16.
16 by 30.
Whatever the application is, I'm not sure what the numbers are for the addition. I'm sorry.
I don't see it, I don't see it on here. Where's the opening? You don't know this.
Oh, actually, the elevation is 14.69. Not the elevation.
Could be.
And it says the first floor right now is, it stands at 757 square feet. Unit one first floor.
Mine doesn't have that on mine.
That would be, let's see, right here.
Oh, you're looking at that. Okay, I probably have it, yep, yep, yep.
So it, it has the attic square feet of 635. So it's probably the attic area that you're really doubling.
Is that right? Does it sound all right?
Yeah, pretty much exactly where the attic is, where.
Okay, yep.
Second story.
Right now, it's attic space, and you're going to turn it into a second floor?
Correct.
Right, so that, again.
So the increase is 635, and the existing first floor is 757. 757.
Okay. Okay, so you have less and more. Okay, so, all right. Does anybody in the audience want to be heard on this?
My name is John Caski, 52 Tilden Road. I'm a potential abbot to this site, depending on a court case. I just, I, I looked through the paperwork of the application and the applicant, and I'm just surprised through the process that there, I know this really kind of has more to deal with Neil than it would to you folks, but there's no architectural drawings or elevations. So, for an abbot, it's, it's very hard to.
Well, actually, there are.
Support or oppose. I didn't see an elevation.
Well, they're drawings.
Well, they must have been, that must have been put in fairly.
Would you like to come and take a look?
I'd love to, sure.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's a simple combination, two doghouse shed dormer. That's the existing. Going in with a double doghouse shed.
Right, right.
Over it.
I think it would be quite nice for the neighborhood.
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be very beneficial. But when I first looked at the application, there were no actual, you know, for an abbot to oppose or.
And the rear here, the rear is, is a straight shed.
Sure, yeah. I think it would be beneficial. I really do.
Uh, anyone else? All right, do we have a motion?
Move, move to grant us. 48 Section 6 special permit slash finding to make an addition at 6 Foam Road, increasing the existing structure from a. 757 square feet to approximately.
1382.
1382. 1380.
No, 1392.
1392 square feet. And find that it is not significantly.
Substantial.
Substantially detrimental, detrimental to the neighborhood.
I think you just need to identify that it's non-conforming.
Yeah, and.
Is it non-conforming?
Yeah. With respect to the, was it the side? I forget already.
The side, yeah, the side setback.
Yeah.
Non-conforming with respect to the side setback.
Okay.
Is it just a non-conforming by side setback?
Yes.
Yes.
Please, second. Oh, and just further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're, we're closely with Neil on that one, just to make sure that.
Oh, yeah.
You're comfortable in the.
Floodplain.
The floodplain and other issues that, if, if we need to reconsider it or, you weigh in, he'll let us know.
Will do.
Let you know.
And Neil, you should talk to him too about building co-re requirements.
Good evening, folks.
Good night.
Good night.
I don't know how far you are from the oceans.
Well, I think that'd be, mostly the legal stuff. The faster it can.
I don't know, right?
It's not any plan.
I don't. All right, excellent. Thanks again.
It'll be nice.
Who gets that one to write?
I think it's me.
Gunboy.
Sarah, you were writing that.
Yes.
Motion to have Sarah talk to us about something?
No?
No, no, no.
New business.
What, you know, what I've been wanting to do is, I think what I'd like to do is mark it up for the, depending on what we have for, for next time, is to take a look at the ZBA rules and regulations to see if we want to make any changes to any of those. We've all been on this long enough, the way certain things come in or requirements of applications, to see if there's anything further. One other thing, one of the things that's been kind of getting to me lately is, it's one thing to have somebody just send a letter and say, I'm in support of this. Thank you very much. "I'm in support of this, thank you very much," or, "I'd like to withdraw my objection." But when people are submitting things to applications, sometimes which are quite large and technical, I think it does a disservice, um, all around, and, you know, to every board member who, who's, who's got to prepare for the meeting and to do that and expect to do that within a day or two, or the day of a meeting. There's been times when I've come in here, and because I've been out of the office, I don't, I don't get that, you know, addition to the file. So, um, and I think it's very unfair to, you know, Nicole and anybody else in the office, who at the last minute has to run around and photocopy things, scan it in, and get it to us in our boxes in time, and Neil, in time for the meeting. So, one additional, um, rule that I would like to talk about is having a requirement that if it's to be considered, uh, with respect to an application, they have to get it in seven days, no later than seven days prior to the meeting. We can still have discretion whether or not we want to accept it, um, but that we also have the discretion not to, not to accept it and not to act on it.
How much time does that give them after they've had notice of the application?
Well, when do they get notice of it?
I notice them 14 days prior. I think that's what I have to do.
Yeah. But they could be away for a week.
Well, maybe you don't want to do it seven days, five days, the Monday of.
Someone who...
Sometimes do 48 hours. I think that's kind of type of the, it's, it was not, can stay up with it 48 hours.
I think 48 hours is too short.
Yeah.
I do.
Well, go ahead, go ahead. All right, well, I, I, someone who lives with deadlines is every day in my life.
Right.
Having to file stuff in court.
Right.
You know, I think it really depends on the circumstances, that, uh, if, if something's particularly complicated and they need to get a consultant, or they need a lawyer, or the lawyer's busy on something else, or, as Ed says, they might have been on vacation that week. You know, I agree with you, the more time that we have to look at and prepare, the better, and that's the best of all worlds. I, I haven't been on the board as long as you have, I, I've only seen, I mean, I'm trying to remember which, which application it was, one where we were getting, it was like every hour we were getting stuff.
Well, that was probably Cell Tower.
Well, in the Cell Tower, yeah. But the Cell Tower was an ongoing thing, too.
The boarding is like that, too.
Yeah.
Even at the last meeting, we had some wetlands submitted during the meeting.
During the meeting, right.
And you can't review them.
Kind of tough for us to, if you were, it's kind of not fair for the applicant, too, and all of a sudden, yeah.
But, but I'm not sure that we can, we can say that the... I don't think we can say we are going to exclude information that the public wants to present, that's what the public hearing is all about. So they could come here and they could give it to us here without any advance notice, and we'd have to take another advisement and then reconsider it at, you know, we'd have to take another advisement and come back to the next meeting. I don't think we can say if we don't have all your information by seven days, five days, 48 hours, that we'll postpone the meeting until we have it, because that could put the, any opponent...
Right.
To an application in the driver's seat. You know, I'm going to drop it off 24 hours early, and they're going to have to postpone because they haven't had 48 hours to look at my stuff.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think that. I mean, I think, and, and I think we can. And the reason I think we can is because I know other towns impose such rules that any, any materials presented to, or for an application have to be, um, well, John Danny's got one, uh, going down in Plymouth, 10 days before the meeting.
Four, yes.
Before the meeting.
No, but, any, anything in favor, anything the applicant presents, anything that is in favor of the application, anything that's coming from the applicant's side, we can say, you know, 10 days, easy.
That I have no problem with. I'm thinking when somebody gets notice and then they want to...
But if someone gets notice, who then is scrambling around trying to, you know, find out, "How do I react to this?" They may take all of the 14 days' notice to realize how, you know, what their rights are under it, and they may come in here at the last minute. I don't think, I mean, as the woman who, this evening, said, "This is the first I've even heard that they were going to do anything there."
Because she has to, they, they have to give notice.
She's been in the office a week, though.
No, and, no, I'm just saying, but, but someone could easily come in and say, "I just heard about this," I mean, legitimately.
They've given notice, that's one of the things that you're at, you're...
What's advertising these things, 14 days prior?
Right. It's not that it's unknowable, it's just that maybe they didn't see it.
Two, I mean, two weeks is nothing. To, to, if, if you've got some, something that's substantially going to affect the rights of your property, and you want to pull together, talk to a lawyer, talk to whatever engineer you know, want to talk to, two weeks is, is, goes by like that.
I don't, I don't disagree.
Really, it's only 10, it's 10 business days.
Right, right.
But at this, at the same time, is that fair to the applicant that, you know, somebody comes in at the last minute and, and they don't have any time to prepare? I mean, I think that, I don't think that, you know, if you guys are fighting on the seven, on seven days, okay. What about 72 hours, or, you know, three days before? Because three days would be, you know, no later than the Monday for a...
Preceding.
Preceding.
That, that's something probably seems reasonable.
And, and it's within our discretion. I don't, I wouldn't want a rule that would say it's absolutely excluded.
Right.
Because, um, because we, we would always have the discretion to say, "We need to look at this and maybe get a continuance on something to..."
Yeah, or if somebody has a good reason.
Well, the fore generally have our, it's two days before she'll have her, you know, notice that, you know, our files are ready.
Yeah, and I, if anything that comes in, I'll just continue to stand and send it to you.
Yeah, but you, but you... It's three days before, at least, eh?
Well, as long as what we write, if, if we're writing a change to the guidelines, um, or the rules and regs, I think it should just simply say that the board may...
Has the discretion.
Add its discretion to, to exclude materials that are received within 72 hours of the, um, hearing. Because we can always, we can always say, "Look, we want to take this under consideration."
Right.
But we can't do it for this hearing because we haven't had time to review it.
Right.
So we're going to continue this because of the evidence that was presented to us tonight.
But I think that will help encourage people to get...
Yeah, I think, I think encouraging is fine, but I think someone walks in, like what happened to us last, last month.
Right.
You know, there's wetlands, uh, where? Here's, look at this. Really? Well...
Yeah.
Let's step back and make sure we have checked this out before we make...
And, and we did. But again, I'd like to cut, I'd like to cut down on, on people just thinking they can bring it in. I'd like to, you know...
That's, I don't want to give them any teeth. That's, that's, I'm just nervous about giving them teeth.
I think the idea of, um, having to try to schedule, we can make the file, oh, it's information that we really need to review or substantial, we can take the time to do that, and we, you know, or if it's, oh, here's a letter from the neighbor stating it's why it's here. You know, it's pretty straightforward, we have, you know, that discretion.
Well, it's, um, I mean, I'm certainly, I, what I'd, what I'd like, if everybody can, because they're on the website, if you don't have a copy at home, is just everybody review it, and if we have, because again, everybody may have different things that, that they've experienced through the meetings that they think, you know, "We really should change this, or tighten this, or this doesn't work, or what about that?" If, if it's a short meeting la, next time to talk about that, and you could, everybody can think about the suggestion I had and, um, consider other stuff.
So, do we need to, because we had, on the Board of Health, we had to, if we were going to propose a rule change, then we had to write it up and then publish it and then announce a hearing. You guys have to do the same thing?
I would assume, I really don't know.
It definitely has to be done and open and voted, but I don't know if we have to advertise.
To get, I mean, to give notice to people that the rules might change because some...
Well, I think we can do it.
I don't think we did that last time, but we'll, I mean, obviously, we're going to have...
I think we did, actually. I think if we, if we put it on our agenda to discuss possible changes to the ZBA rules and regs, that's giving notice.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if someone would have to find out. I don't have access to town council to ask, so I don't know, but if one of you are willing to...
Okay, yeah, I can, I'll, I'll chase that down.
Yeah, because I know we had, we had to, we would publish the actual proposed change.
Right.
So that, so that somebody would know, rather than, you know, you, instead of, if you're changing the, the meetings from 7:00 to 7:15, nobody's going to show up and protest it. This rule might affect some of the engineers that come in front of us, and they might want to come in and say, "Do 48 hours like other towns instead of 72," or, or whatever.
I think we could, Frank said, to put those proposals after we discuss them in writing and...
Right.
And discuss them, the physical changes.
I don't see this as a one-meeting deal.
Why don't we just have, we have an agenda item next meeting, presuming that it's, there's enough room.
To discuss.
Put it on it anyway, and, and if we feel like we don't have time to discuss it, we'll just, we'll, um, put it over to the next meeting.
Right.
But an agenda item to discuss rules and regulations and possible changes.
Okay.
That way, we can discuss it.
Do they have to be in 72 hours before the meeting?
Yes.
We're doing it a month before.
Well, everybody's going to have to just read them on their own and come in and, and, you know, they're maybe, they're not actually that long, because I thought, I remembered them being, you know, incredibly long, and I think...
Like a page and a half, isn't it?
Really short. We did it with, um, one Al, who's chair, don't you remember?
I think, it was actually the year I was off.
Okay.
The week or two I was off.
Yeah, the week or two.
No, it was almost eight months, I think.
But, yeah, it's just time to look at again, and, um, you know, to help everything run more smoothly and to have people have an understanding of what's expected of them. So, I'm sorry it's, uh, so late, guys. I thought we'd be...
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would.
Second motion.
All in favor?